You must not be talking about water tonight. See, get me out of here as soon as possible.
Yeah, if we let him go first, his and his allies gonna pay for all the water.
Yeah.
Called order the regular meeting of the solving city council for August 22nd, 2016. Will you call to roll please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Present.
Jamison?
Here.
Skid? Ebsen? Zimmerman?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
I'm present. And will you stand with me for the pledge, please?
Please hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager's report.
Just a couple of things to bring up. One is to remind the public that this weekend on Saturday Wheels and Whimmills will be back in solving. So there'll be some road closures and lots of nice cars to take a look at. I don't know if the mayor's judging this year or not.
But I haven't been asked.
Oh, you're not judging, okay.
I wonder if that's a sign of things.
And then second, in keeping with the incremental anniversaries, Diane Christensen in our building planning department is celebrating 10 years this month with the city of solving. And that's my report.
Public communications, written or verbal, at this time please direct communications to the city council regarding consent counter items or items not or matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. And Fred Koval, first. I'd like you to go first because I want Ryan to hear you talk.
A little early there. A little early there. Want to reset that timer, please? Haven't even... I'll let you know when to start it. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Fred Koval, solving. I've shared with you a couple of handouts that the city manager, excuse me, city clerk applied, supplied to you guys. And I'd like to go with it a little bit. California pension funds get caught in a squeeze. And everybody knows what CalPERS, hers CalPERS, but it's really California Public Employees Retirement system. And the chief actuary in 2009 stated that the pension costs are unsustainable. And as it turned out today, he forecasted for non-police and fire, it was going to be a 25% increase and for fire, 40 to 50% increase. In actuality, for this past year, it was 27% increase for non-safety folks. So the state was hammered in 2009, of course, with a severe recession. And they haven't been able to recover since then. When you go, when you listen to the chief actuary today, no, the workers put in 3.7 billion every year. And you guys, which is us guys, put in 10.1 billion worth. However, the outlay was 18.9 billion, which is a little over 5 billion in arrears. So we go on here and you say, oh, these guys, well, they way back when, they would say, hey, we'll get seven and a half percent return on our money and our investments. And then later on, they'd say, well, 6.4, we'll be okay. Well, you look at it today, what happened last year, the last fiscal year? What'd they make? Well, it was measly 0.61%. That was it. That just can't continue. Would you, the reform, there was some reform in San Jose and San Diego, but it's getting unwound. So there's no hope there. In 2012, the governor Brown, he says, well, yeah, it's unsustainable. We gotta do something. But nothing has happened. So what are we looking towards? New taxes. That's what it's gonna be. They respond. Outlays will continue increasing, continue outstrip inflow. Why? Because more employees are retiring. In fact, a drove are retiring, according to Dan Walters, who wrote this for the Santa Barbara News Press. So what can we see? It's 300 billion now in arrears. And if we have the current income rate of under 1%, it's going to grow to $1 trillion. It'll be really unsustainable. And it'll be unsustainable for the smaller cities like solving. So my plan, you've heard some of it before, but I'm going to tell you again. Maybe it'll sink in at some future date. Here's the solution. And I've said this before, give away all the departments. Give away the water department, its infrastructure and its billing to ID number one. Give away the wastewater treatment plant in the sewer to the community services district. Why? I've said this before, they are the professionals. They know how to make it work. Give away our public works department. Planning and development, parks and rec. Privatize it. Privatize it. Reduce our government and provide a cost reduction to the rate payers, to the residents of the city. Remember, we, the residents, loan our responsibility to you to manage the city's departments and the revenue. It's our sales tax, not yours. It's our bed tax, it's our property tax that run this city, not you. We're at the top of the org chart, the residents are. We need new faces, not old faces. Think about this, I like the SCVB. They make a profit. They make a big profit for the city. And aren't they a private entity? I haven't been led otherwise than they are. So there's a shining example of how we can make this city work at reduced costs.
Thank you, Fred. Ryan, Deuce. I hope you can pronounce your name for me because I'm California educated and I can hardly read.
Toussaint.
Toussaint. Thank you.
Like crusant.
Like what? Oh, like who's on Toussaint, gotcha. You know, the Brad's is like hydrophider.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. My name is Ryan Toussaint, resident of the city of solving. And I've heard it mentioned on several occasions that the council's looking for new faces for candidacy. And so I'd like to answer this call by offering my candidacy for city council. My platform is simple, with four goals. Reduce and maintain water and sewer rates. Fiscal responsibility. Address the traffic on Mission Drive. And I'd also like to see a tech center for youth. I'll provide further details on my campaign as that unfolds.
You know, thank you for answering the call. You know, I've asked the folks come forward to run for office. And I jokingly say every office except mine.
Right.
But, yeah, I appreciate your effort and good luck to you.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker slips for the public comments. Does anybody else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go on to, no correspondence received. Approval of the agenda as presented, any changes to the agenda? No, okay. Number, oh, council comments and requests. I did it again, I'm sorry. Since you brought it up, would you like to do council comments and requests, Ms. Jameson?
Sure. If at all possible, I would like us to start monitoring better ID ones meetings. And if we can only do it through the agenda and through the minutes that they publish, I think we should all get copies of those. You could just email them to us.
We can do that.
Okay. And then I'm just really concerned about what they are going to be trying to do. And I hope that somebody in our water department will be following that also and making sure that they're not taking advantage of us. Hans and I were kind of joking the other day about, not joking, but commiserating about how horrible solving park looks. And the fact that we ask people to come and watch the movies and sit on dirt with their blankets. If at all possible, I would like to see some lawn there. I know that it goes against everything we're doing, conserving water, et cetera. But I think it looks horrible and I do not think it's an inviting invitation to the people that come to this community. And probably it's because I was in the Midwest and everybody has nice green lawns. But I go to other communities in California and their city squares are all nice green. They have not let them go, so.
Well, what we're doing there is exactly what the council's stage two drought was, is we're reducing the irrigation by 50%. That's the result. So if the council would like to direct us to do something differently, we can put an agenda item on to get that direction. But from a staff standpoint, we're following the stage two drought.
And I understand that and I appreciate that. However, it is, it's a blight. It doesn't, it's not inviting. You're asking...
I hear it quite often, believe you.
And I'm sure you do and I do too. And I don't have a good, you know, I just say we're doing what has been mandated. But if there's, maybe we can create a little foundation, feed the lawn at...
Well, and it's, once again, it's not monetary. It's the restriction that we put into place of 50% use of irrigation from 2013. And to do that, that, it's not adequate enough to keep it green.
Well, maybe we need to redo it and put polymers in the soil or something to it. It keeps the water there. I don't know. There are ways that you can keep a lawn green and not spend a lot of money or a lot of water watering it.
So we could bring back an agenda item to look at different potential greening type solutions, if you'd like. If I get nods to the head, we'll bring something back.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Deuce?
Thank you. Thank you. See, a couple of things. One, I want to just comment on our crews that are out working fires everywhere. Talked to Gordon a couple of times, he's captain C shift here. Talked to him one time, I think it was Friday, late morning, just as they were pulling in. And our city clerk's brother was part of that group coming in. They looked terrible, they smelled worse. And they were headed out the next, that evening for another overnight shift. Talked, talked to Gordon later on in the weekend, actually gave him a call just as they were, I believe they were in the process of pulling out a live oak camp. And he sounded even tireder than he did Friday. So anyway, I know those guys are just really humping up there. It's, they're in some old growth, at least that's where the head is going. They've, it sounds like they made a pretty good stand-up peach tree to stop the western growth. And that's really where any development is. So now it's getting lost up in the wilderness. Actually, in some unburned area that hasn't burned in well over 100 years. So it needs to get cleaned out anyway, so. Second thing I would like to talk about is at economic development meeting Friday morning, Tracy Farhood gave a really great presentation on using, on a study that was, she had done on using the vets hall as a mini conference convention type center. It, and I would actually encourage the council here to have her bring that to us and that we take a look at it. I think it, I know that when we did the study some years ago, it came back quite negative. And that was based on, you know, the avenue that we were going. I think that this direction might have some merit that I think we should at least take a look at.
Tracy can come before us anytime with a presentation. We can make room for it on any agenda, any agenda, so. We invite her.
Okay. This is also, I guess, kind of a early committee report, so you can get out of here earlier.
Report.
That was the report. That's, that's all my comments.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yep, just want to welcome everybody here tonight and congratulate all the nominated candidates. Congratulations, you guys got past the first step. And I look forward to seeing how it goes and seeing who joins this dais with us. So good luck on that. And, oh, with the water in the park and that kind of stuff, I think we just need to continue on a proactive approach, securing water through purchases and, you know, keep doing what we're doing. And work with ID one to make sure we don't get in a bad situation there as well. And I think then we'll be able to get a green park and some, hopefully. And, oh, I was a part of a think tank today and a couple of guys that were in it are working on this technology or it's actually already there, but there's some stuff they're trying to, you know, increase its capabilities. And it's essentially turning air into water. And there's a couple of different things. They have like, you know, larger units and then they have more of a household type of a unit. And I don't know, that could be also an answer to, say, landscaping for the city and, you know, designate something like that. So it only takes care of that one thing. But as it goes on, I'll kind of update you guys on these guys bringing the technology here and, you know, how it develops. Yep, thanks.
May I ask Neil a question? Have they been able to bring the price of those units down at all? Because they're pretty expensive.
They are expensive.
You're not on.
Yep, they are expensive. I know that that's what they're, essentially that's what they're working on, is bringing the cost down, the manufacturing end of it. But they're also working on a plan where it's, if it's for the home user, it will be more of like a subscription, like a monthly membership type of a thing, which makes sense depending on what you're comparing it against. It's drinkable, potable water, so it makes sense, like drinking water rather than Arrowhead or something like that. I mean, it's like crazy savings. And there may be some other type of unit, you know, larger they are, the less cost there is. But yeah, there's going to be a fine line there. Is it worth it for like landscaping in those larger projects like that? But, yeah, they're expensive, I think, as of right now.
Since you brought up ID one, I'll reiterate my concerns with ID one and the ad valorem tax that ID one has proposed. It goes before the county for approval soon. It's not on this next agenda tomorrow. And I'll briefly go over it, is that we, as a community, not as a customer, but as a community, use less than 1% of the annual water production of ID one. That's an important, that's over a 10-year average. It's much less than 1%. The ad valorem tax that they're going to propose, they need $750,000 this year. The ad valorem tax was in effect since 1960. They terminated it in 2010. Do you remember that, Karen? Yeah, right. You were voted, you and two others were voted in in order to do that. And I, can I, I have a question about that. Was that a termination or a suspension of the tax? Do you recall?
I do recall suspension.
Well, they said it was a suspension.
Yeah, I, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, if I look back, I wouldn't want to misquote anything. I believe it was a suspension. But I'm sure you can call the district and get a fact on that one.
They've said it was a suspension. And there's a question in my mind whether they can reinstate it after so many years, since, what, six years now?
Yeah, I don't know. I honestly can't answer that.
Thank you. But the upshot of the thing is, is that our contribution to their $750,000 is 36%, which is $270,000 that will be taken out of the economy of solving by the property owners. It's totally unfair. I presented a, I presented this to that board. Our elected representatives that represent the two districts in solving were not there to vote on the resolution that, that brought that forward to the county. And I offered to pay our fair share, which was $62.80 of the $750,000. That's how much our fair share is. I intend to, I've discussed this with Doreen Farr and presented her with some information. And I planned to go before the board of supervisors when that issue comes before them and ask them to reconsider not allowing that tax based on the fairness attitude. And which brings me to the problem of, we're a customer. The city of solving is a customer of ID one and its residents live in the boundaries of ID one. And I haven't resolved in my own mind the conflict with that. It's just not a, it's not a fair, in my mind, a fair thing where we have three meters, which allows us three votes on the 218 proposition on water rates. But yet, we have 2,000 meters in town that don't get to vote at all. So it's a, it's a problem that needs resolution and I intend to go before the board of supervisors. And if I can get any help from anybody to support that with that effort, well, I'd appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Okay, on to the agenda as presented. City council minutes of August 8th, 2016. Are there any corrections, deletions or modifications to those? Can I have a motion accepting?
It's moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Pass 401. The consent agenda, does anybody wish to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? Seeing none, we won't read it, we'll just vote on it. Can I have a motion accepting the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you call to roll, please?
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jamison? Deuce?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, it was passed with a 401. On to the regular agenda. Item number seven. Thank you, Shelby.
Item seven, 2016 League of California Cities Annual Conference Resolutions.
Your voting member's not here today, but we'll give him your direction that you provide. But there's only one resolution on the annual conference this year and it, I will read it. It's a resolution committing the city, committing the League of California Cities to supporting Vision Zero, Towards Zero Deaths and Other Programs Initiatives to Make Safety a Top Priority for Transportation Projects and Policy Formulations While Encouraging Cities to Pursue Similar Initiatives. I'm not going to go through all the backup for that. I'm sure you've read that. It's in the league's packet this year. So what we're asking for is for you to give direction to your voting member on, at the league conference next month when he attends, whether to vote yes, no, or abstain on that particular resolution.
Are there, are there any questions? Staff report? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Jameson?
Are there going to be any financial requirements as a result of this resolution?
No, this is just a resolution of support and asking you to follow in the same steps. It's not a requirement to be...
One vote out of 495 or something like that.
Pardon me?
There's one vote out of 495 representatives to this League of California Cities. This is what it is.
Okay, well, in some...
It's a resolution for the League of California Cities.
I understand that. But in some of these resolutions from the various cities, they're spending big bucks. So I'm just wondering if we are expected to spend big bucks also?
Yeah, it's, what it's doing is encouraging cities to create a program. So we, obviously you could control your own program.
So they're not going to come down and say, the League of Cities has decided this, therefore you are going to...
No, they won't.
We're just members.
Okay, I'm going to remember that, Brad.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion, please? I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass 401. On to item next, item eight.
Item eight, City of solving updated 10-year capital improvement program.
Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. Matt Vander Linden, your public works director and city engineer. Before I launch into the presentation, I did just want to respond to a few of your comments and let you know that the staff does review the ID one agenda, their board meeting agendas every time they're made public. And we do make every effort to attend the meetings that have any items on there that might be of consequence or significance to the city. So just to let you know, we do look at that every month.
Would you remind then reporting out that to us if you see something on the agenda? Because some of, you know, I, I read it, but I never, you know, I don't hear anything more about it. So I'm just, I have concerns, I guess.
Yeah, I get, I get all the agendas. I can forward them and we can highlight any item that would be pertinent to solving.
I get the agendas too, but I'd like to know more about what the discussion is because the minutes are usually very vague.
I would appreciate a tickler on the agenda when the meetings come up.
Yeah, so some of the things that we look, look at is they're, you know, they're doing this large project to address the chromium six problem. So we're following that. They occasionally have items on their agenda regarding our river wells project. So we follow that. Those are two things in particular we look for. But there are other things that we review and see if there's anything on there that...
This discussion is under capital improvement?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's all part of the, part of the plan. Okay, with that, I'll launch into the presentation. So our 10-year, our 10-year plan this year covers fiscal years 2016, 17 through 2025, 26. And as you may be aware, the city's capital improvement program is all about maintaining the city's public infrastructure. And so based on needs that have been identified by staff and the city council, we developed a 10-year plan that identifies and prioritizes and schedules these projects. So there are several purposes of the 10-year plan. So there are several purposes of the 10-year plan. It allows for long-range strategic planning. It allows for systematic evaluation of all potential projects at the same time, to sort of take a holistic approach and see how certain projects might impact one another. And it provides an opportunity for, for the city council to set or adjust priorities. And it's also a useful tool for the city council when adopting the city budget each year. So there are multiple components of the, of the capital improvement program. And several of the components relate to the various departments of the city, and several components relate to the various divisions within the Public Works Department, such as the Engineering Division, Water Division, Wastewater Division. So we have various multiple funding sources for the capital improvement program. Of course, the general fund is one of the, one of the primary sources. Also, various government impact fees, like traffic mitigation fees. We also have our Traffic Safety Fund and Gas Tax Funds. We have Measure A, both the portion for local, annual local projects, as well as the $3 million that are earmarked for Highway 246 circulation improvements within Solvang. So in the 10-year plan, we do have a couple projects, roadway, street, and traffic mitigation-related projects that are proposing to utilize some of those $3 million in the earmarked Measure A funds. Of course, we have the Water Fund, Wastewater Fund. We have the Transit Fund, which is primarily made up of federal and state funding that we receive for, for public transit. And then occasionally, we have available small amounts of Regional Surface Transportation Program funding and State Transportation Improvement Program funding. And then the last item there is Grants and PG&E Rule 20A. So as a reminder, we have a project in our plan to construct or do the undergrounding of overhead power lines at the intersection of Fifth Street and Mission Drive. And that is to be funded by Rule 20A funding from PG&E. And just a few months ago, we submitted a grant application to construct sidewalk in several locations throughout the city. And that was submitted to Caltrans under, it's listed as ATP. That's the acronym for the Active Transportation Program. We should find out in about two months whether or not our grant application was approved on that. We also have a variety of types of projects. We have annual programs to repair and rehabilitate facilities. We also have our slurry seal overlay, pavement repair project, sidewalk, and access ramp projects, including curb and gutter and drainage improvements and repairs. Also, right now, it's listed as future. Because our efforts, because of the big water projects we're doing right now, and our efforts to keep the capital expenditures to a minimum, and therefore keep the rates, water and sewer rates to a minimum, we've been deferring our water line, valve, and fire hydrant replacement program. Of course, we have wells and reservoir projects in our 10-year plan, and sewer line and manhole replacement and maintenance, and wastewater treatment plant upgrades and repairs. And these are just a few photos that I'm gonna present about projects that were completed during this last fiscal year. These are some photos showing the construction. And the nearly, in the upper right is the nearly completed garage facility to house several pieces of equipment out at the wastewater treatment plant and extend the useful life of those pieces of equipment. This is, in the upper right, you see the extension of Maple Avenue to Pine Street. Pine Street's off in the distance there. And along with that, we extended our, our sewer line in Maple Avenue. We extended the water line. So in the, in the upper left photograph, you see they're cutting in a section of line that has these isolation valves, gate valves, and a T. And that's where the new water line in Maple Avenue connected into the existing water line on Pine Street. And so this provided an additional loop within our distribution system, which helps improve redundancy and reliability of our system, and provided new valves to, to do shutdowns when we have need to do maintenance and repair work. In the lower right photograph, you see the construction of an infiltration chamber. This is a stormwater infiltration chamber. And this is a device to both filter the stormwater and to help promote infiltration of the stormwater to recharge the groundwater basin. So this, this facility was constructed underneath the parking lot of the Solvang Senior Apartments. That, it was a condition of approval for them. And these are the types of facilities that you'll, you'll be seeing more of in the future because of the new stormwater regulations and our NPDS permit. So these are the type of facilities that are, are being required to be installed. There, there's various different designs, but, but...
Matt?
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that, that that device allows the, the stormwater to go through it and seep into the, to the water, up to the ground underneath?
Yes. So, so just let me explain the photograph a little bit better. So they dig a giant pit. They line it with the filter fabric, which is that black fabric-looking material. They put gravel on the bottom, about two feet of gravel on the bottom. And then those yellow chambers are arched structures. It's like a half-pipe section. And then, once those are set in place and the connecting piping to connect to the, to the catch basin in the parking lot, then they backfill over those, those yellow chambers with three feet of more gravel. And then the, the filter fabric is rolled over the top of that like a burrito, and then backfilled with dirt. And they, and they pave, you know, compact all that and pave the parking area. And the drainage facilities are routed to, to this structure. And so what, what happens in, in your smaller storms, the water's routed through there. If you have a really large storm that exceeds the capacity of this structure, then that excess flow, flows to the street and to the public storm drain system, and it's caught by that. And then the photograph in the middle there, that is the new pipeline that was installed on Alisal Road between Mission Drive and Maple Avenue. And when this development was under review, it was determined that the six-inch, existing six-inch sewer line in Alisal Road north of Mission was not adequately sized to convey the additional sewage flow that they'd be adding. So one of the conditions of the development was to analyze the capacity of that section of line, and then replace the six-inch line with, upsize it with an eight-inch line. So they replaced an entire block's length of old clay pipe with new PVC piping. And like I said, increased the pipe size from six to eight inches. Here's some photographs of our slurry seal project that was under construction approximately this time last year, which included several city streets, the Adderlag Road in front of the Solvang School, and a couple of city parking lots. This is some sidewalk work. In the upper left, you see before photograph, the sidewalk's badly uplifted around the tree, and there's very little room for that tree to continue to grow without continually uplifting the sidewalk. So, and per the city council direction, all of Mission Drive and all the commercial part of town, as we replace the sidewalk, we're replacing it with brick, with the brick sidewalk. So there is actually a layer of concrete underneath the brick to give added stability to that. But in the lower left-hand photograph, you see the after photograph with that stretch of sidewalk that was removed and replaced with the brick. And the area around the tree was increased to give the tree room to continue to grow without damaging the sidewalk for many years. Then there's a few other photographs of some new brick sidewalk on Fourth Place near the Valley Brewer Business. And then sidewalk that was, concrete sidewalk that was replaced by Solvang School. It's a little hard to tell, but you can see a slight different color of the new concrete, about 30 feet around the vicinity of that first tree in the photograph in the upper, in the upper right photo. And so that section of sidewalk was badly cracked and uplifted by the tree roots, and it was replaced. And when we replaced the sidewalk there, we also increased the size of the tree well to give the tree space to grow for many years without potential damage to the, to the sidewalk. And then, of course, this is our new HCA South well. And just about two, three weeks ago, we received approval from the state to put the well into service. And we're, at this time, we are addressing a minor problem with the chemical feed system, which is the disinfection equipment for the well. And once that's resolved, the well will be put into service. I, I thought you might be interested in the lower left. The photograph shows a horizontal directional boring machine. And that was used, rather than trench up the hill from the lower portion of the park, from the well area up the hill to the existing water line or water system in Skip Mesa, instead of having an excavator, you know, work its way up that hill and excavate and lay pipe, we, we had a value engineering option provided by the contractor and installed the pipeline by horizontal directional drilling. So at the top, this, this machine sends sections of steel pipe that are, or steel rod that are rotating and drilling down. And that goes down the hill, and they can guide that, the head of that drilling device. It goes to the bottom of the hill, and they have a pit where they dig that receives the, the end of the, the drilling head. And then they attach a section of high-density polyethylene pipe, a big, long section of that, that's all been welded together. And they pull that back up through the, through the hole that the, that the machine has bored. And so we have one nice continuous section of pipeline and didn't have to worry about erosion on the face of the slope during this past winter.
Matt, would you remind us of the production from that well?
Yeah, the capacity of the well, it was designed for 150 gallons a minute. And at this point, the, the pump that was installed has a little bit better efficiency than, than the design parameters. And it's able to produce about 170 to 180 gallons per minute.
Matt, I have a question on that, that horizontal drilling. What was, you said it was value engineered. What was, what was the cost difference between that and the tradit, the traditional excavating?
Well, in this case, they proposed a no-cost change order.
Okay.
So, you know, they had to get, bring in this, this other rig, and they installed the water line. And also, we have a couple electrical conduits that ran parallel with the water line, because we have a small antenna at the top of the hill to communicate with our SCADA system, our water radio telemetry system. And so all three of those were installed with this system, and they proposed a no-cost change order. So because of the advantage of eliminating the potential for the erosion and everything, and also having no joints in the pipe for that whole stretch, should result in lower maintenance and having to go back there in the future for possible leaks or whatever. But they proposed, the contractor proposed the no-cost change, and we accepted that.
Okay, thank you.
And then here's a summary of the, the 10-year plan. Shows the various program categories and the 10 years in the plan. The, the years that have higher than normal expenditures are highlighted down at the total row at the bottom in red, or that sort of pinkish color. Typically, our capital improvement plan on an annual basis runs between two and two-and-a-half million dollars per year, kind of on average. But we have a few years that are higher, either because of, like, for example, this year, we have the, the seismic retrofit project going on. It's an approximate million-dollar project. And then we have other large well projects. Next year, we have the construction of improvements to Well 22. And then the year after that, construction of the river wells. And I did wanna mention, you may note a discrepancy. In the 10-year plan, for 2016, 17, the total is approximately 4.2 million. In the 10-year plan, we included the costs for the, the Alamo-Puntado Creek Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge. But in the actual budget, since we don't really know quite for sure how that's gonna go, but in the budget, we have not included that cost in this year's budget. So in this next slide, it shows the total and all the projects listed in this year's budget. But the, the project that's kind of in the dark, dark shaded row there, that's the Alamo-Puntado Creek Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge. And that's, that's why there's the difference between the four point, the 4.2 and the 3.6 million. With that, the staff would like to request that the city council accept the 10-year capital improvement program and approve the recommendations as presented in the staff report. And that concludes, concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the, of the report?
Yeah, just, just a clarification again on the Alisal Bridge seismic retrofit project in at 1.694. That's total cost. What is our share of that?
Yeah, just to clarify, it got put in the budget that way, but then after the budget was approved, we had the bid opening, and the bids came in lower than expected. So the total, total construction cost is closer to 1 million rather than 1.6 million. But 100% of that funding is being reimbursed to the city by the state through the seismic grant. So 100% of it's being paid for through the grant.
Yeah. And our, our only cost was a fairly small portion of the planning, correct?
The city had to pay for the environmental work and 11 and 1/2% of the design. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Zimmerman?
On the 22 new parking spaces for next year, I know it's kind of an up in the air thing. I don't know if we're solid on that yet, but what is the cost? Do we have like a cost, what it's worth per parking space or anything like that to weigh up that number to make it make sense? That's a, that's a big number for 20...
I think for, I'm trying to think of the right words, but for...
Parking and lieu?
Yeah. You're referring to the acquisition of the...
Yeah, acquisition, and then per space, if we, like, put a cost to per space and the life of those spaces, what are we looking at?
Well, we, we haven't put a cost to that, because at this point, we're, that's, I believe that's a closed session item for the city council to discuss the, yeah, so...
Yeah, those are just sort of placeholders in there. We haven't, you know, done the final, the acquisition is obviously a missing link, but the construction cost, you would have had fairly good numbers for just doing the new parking lot. And the drainage underneath it. Did you do some of those numbers?
Uh, no, not yet. Yeah, we haven't done that. Yeah. But, but I believe the property that had been previously discussed as being considered, we were gonna get something like 32 parking spaces.
Okay.
Something like that.
And then the drainage part of it, is that pretty valuable? And is, is it, is it something that we need? Can we put a number, like, what it's worth for the infrastructure of the city or something?
Well, in the 10-year plan, we do have our Second Street drainage improvements. And that project is anticipated to proceed in two phases. But the second phase would do improvements that are definitely badly needed to the, to the, the head wall where the, where that storm drain system discharges. And, and so that is in the, in the 10-year plan.
Okay.
But those improvements are definitely needed, the storm drain improvements, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Yes. Ms. Jamison?
Okay, I probably missed the discussion about a new parking lot when I was not here.
No.
No? I mean, is this the first you've heard of a new parking lot?
That's always been in the background, you know?
Okay, what are we doing about approaching Solvang School? Why are we going to the expense of buying a piece of land to use for parking?
Well, I think we've, we've talked to Solvang School already, Brad.
Well, yeah, actually, I've not, not gotten a comment from the new superintendent, a response back on that. So I'm still waiting to hear... So I'm still waiting to hear from him. But we're actually going both, both the tracks of that. If you recall, in the budget, we changed for our goals was pursuit of a new parking lot and also Solvang School parking. So it'd be, obviously, those are in two different locations. So one's north of the highway, one's south. So we're looking at potentially a south area for, for a new parking lot. And that's not, not in stone. It's just, as we, as we lose parking spots for different reasons around town, we're trying to create, there's probably going to be a need for a new public lot at some point. And so that's why Matt's looking at that. We're trying to combine the, the projects. As Neil had mentioned, the storm drainage benefits of using a lot on this end of town is where most of our stormwater comes. So if we're able to do something under that parking lot, we get kind of a two-for-one, two-for-one out of that project.
Yeah, I did want to also mention that it's been a project in our, identified in the circulation element of the city general plan, that the city add additional parking. And so that's been, that's been in the circulation element for several years.
Years.
And so as a result of that, that's been in the 10-year capital plan for many years now. And so we thought this year, we might be able to take kind of the first step of investigating that, so...
Well, I still would like you to pursue Solvang School and I'd like you to sweeten the pot for them some way by saying you would maintain the lot. I mean, that's the cheapest parking lot we could get. It has far more than 22 or 32 spaces.
We can, we can talk. If, if he responds to me, we can, we can move forward on it.
Well, okay, but maybe we...
Now, it is limited, though, only to when school's not in session.
No, that's not true. That would not be true. Because when we put that parking lot in, when I was on the school board, we were hoping that there was some way, there could be a joint use of it and a joint sharing of the maintenance. And I know this many years ago.
Right.
But don't let it get away. I mean, you know, the weekends are when we have the, the majority of the tourists. School is not in session during that time.
Yeah.
And it'd be a shame to asphalt over another piece of property that we don't have to.
Okay.
My opinion.
Good. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comment. I have one speaker slip.
Hi, guys. Fred Koval. I see this traffic signal installation down at the bottom of the hill. And I just think you put one down there at Skid Mesa Buell Flat Rock entrance, it's going to be death to tourism. There's going to be a backup that's just going to be tremendous. Why? Because you've got to commute twice a day. You've got the high school at 3 o'clock. All of this has got to get through the city. You put another, you know, brick wall down there, and you've seen the times I've told you about and you know for yourself how it backs up all the way to the ostrich farm on certain weekends like 4th of July, Labor Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Valentine's Day, just to name a few. However, I like the mayor's idea from way back when. That one is just wanting to be a roundabout. Got to be. And it's just got to be the right size so it'll take care of Buell Flat truck, trucks, okay? The right size. Now, you know, there's several kinds of roundabouts. There's the classic roundabout, but there's also the roundabout that allows you to go in the direction you want to go without using the roundabout. I just came through Sedona, Arizona. There was 11 roundabouts on the south end. Some were tricky, some were easy. I'm in my motorhome. I've got almost 50 feet hanging out there. Some I loved. So the big research is, take a look at all kinds of roundabouts, just not the simple California roundabout. Second item, maybe I missed it, I don't know, but I didn't see that sidewalk going in on Alisal Road between Maple and Eucalyptus. Is it in there? The one that's really needed in the city. People walk, there's more people walking up and down that street per day and, and somehow it just, it's avoidance. There's, they seem, you seem to all avoid it. It's begging to have a sidewalk put in, at least on one side of the street. I know on the west side of the street, you've got more barriers in the way where people are encroached on the cities right away, the street right away. But on the east side, it looks like it'd be a cakewalk to get up that side. So I just ask you to please consider it, look into it again.
We had a sidewalk workshop?
I know.
Did, did you attend?
I was gone, I'm sorry. I would have been here with bells on.
I think that was suggested during that, during that workshop.
But, but where is it? Where is it in the, is it in the CIP?
Well, the CIP doesn't go, drill down to that, that level of detail to identify the all the exact locations and what year those will be included. But that section of, of, of street is included at this point in our sidewalk master plan, which in, in about a month, we're going to be coming back to city council with that for approval and final, you know, review and comments. But, but that, that block is part of the, it is in there.
Okay.
So it's a 10-year sidewalk master plan. And it identifies prior, proposed priorities for the city council to review and consider and direct staff on.
Okay. Next year, huh? Installed next year?
Fred, before you leave, I have to comment on your previous comment during public, public comment time regarding the expertise of our wastewater treatment plant people.
No, I knew you said...
We have, we have, you were saying that the CSD has experts. We also, as a city, have experts in the wastewater treatment plant. And I want you to understand that they're some of the best in the state and they're doing a fine job of wastewater treatment. So, so don't, don't call them, don't shortcut, don't shortcut them.
Oh, I didn't, I, I'd had no idea that I was shortcutting them in your mind. That was the farthest thing I, I could have ever have thought about.
Thank you. I have to defend for them. Thank you.
Well, okay. I hope you didn't have to get paid off too.
Is there any, any other public comment regarding the CIP? Yes, Karen?
Good evening. Karen Waite, Solvang City resident candidate for city council. I, I just wanted to say that after reviewing the 10-year plan, I completely understood that the sidewalk issues were covered with the workshop because I read a little, a little bit about that, because that, that's a concern. Since my platform is going to be very, very heavily weighted on tourism and revenue, I am really concerned about the parking. Joan Jamison brought up the parking. That's a really big deal to me. And also the bridge, the footbridge down over by Alamo-Puntado. So to me, that really hits tourism and I just would want to make sure that that was, is well-covered in your budget, in your plan.
Thank you. Regarding her comments? No? Okay.
Well, I think the, the council on the footbridge issue, we had an update several meetings ago about how Caltrans has pretty much said, if you build it, you'll take it down when we build the new bridge. So we're, we're on hold on that particular project.
Yeah, on that project right now, per the city council's direction, we've, we've written a letter, well, actually, the mayor sent a letter to SB CAG requesting that the funding be able to be utilized towards the, the bridge replacement and widening, which would include the bike lanes on both sides. And so we're waiting for the SB CAG board to consider that and give us a response.
Right.
And we do, the staff has a meeting regarding this scheduled with Caltrans, I think in about two weeks, so...
Thank you. I have no other speaker slips. Does anyone else wish to comment on the CIP? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Who would like to start? Can I have a motion then? No discussions?
I move that we accept the 10-year capital improvement program.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. That's a 401 pass. Thank you, Matt. Good job. That's a great presentation. It was the, your graphs or your matrix looked really good. Councilmember reports this time, are there any? Well, okay...
I, I have one.
Yes.
The Community Services District has been waiting to hear from LAFCO as to how the vote went regarding annexing those various properties over, along Rafufia Road into the Community Services District. And they are having a most difficult time deciphering how to weight the votes because it's just not property owners that got to vote. There were renters that got to vote. There were, there were like four categories and it befuddles me that that's how they ran their election. But that's how they did it and they still don't have any results. So we don't know if that's going to affect our wastewater treatment plant yet.
That, okay. There's some history about that, but I won't go into that right now.
A lot, a lot of history.
Yeah. If there's no other comments, then we'll stand adjourned.